Good evening and welcome everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Sweet girl, perfect. I have everyone on there. Can I get a motion that the agenda for the February 23rd, 2021 committee of the whole meeting be adopted as presented? Councilor Byer will make that motion. All those in favor? Motion carried. Can I get a motion that the minutes of the February 9th, 9th, 2021 committee of the whole meeting be adopted as presented? Sorry, Mayor Sahara made that motion. Any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor? Perfect, moving on. Alright, we have a delegation tonight from the Edson Cycling Association. I believe that's Mr. Stonewalker. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening Mayor and fellow council. Thanks for this opportunity to present this evening. Are we ready to go or is there any other prep needed?
We are ready to go.
Okay, super. I will turn on my screen share for the presentation and get through these slides within 15. Okay, here we go. So as a refresher, my name is Mike Stoner Walker. I'm president of the Edson Cycling Association. And I'll be putting forward an annual funding request for maintenance costs on the Wilmore Park Trails and Edson Bike Skills Park. This delegation agenda will include a Wilmore Trails background, details on trail maintenance and repairs, a quick bike park summary followed by a maintenance description and funding request. And due to time constraints, testimonials, budget summary and maps are for reference purposes only. So I'd like to make a quick but big thank you to the town from granting us a construction license in 2015 to putting forward major funding for the bike park in 2018. That was at $350,000. We are very grateful for the continued support. Thank you. Here's our volunteer hour summary through the years. We've now totaled over 4,000 volunteer hours in the fields. Last year was challenging with COVID, but we still had an amazing turnout both with the bike park construction and trail repairs. Totally just under 800 hours. And here's a summary for the Wilmore Park Trails. Since attaining the construction license from the town in 2015, we have built over nine kilometers of new trails. We've also maintained and repaired existing trails. So currently there is over 19 kilometers of total trails. So that includes crown land and private land. And 15 and a half of those kilometers are on town lands. So that includes the two recreation leases. Wilmore Park land covers, town land covers 400 acres. And for context, you could fit over four vision parks inside Wilmore. So it's quite a bit of space down there. I'd also like to give some background to our current trail repair challenges. The original 1985 Wilmore Park Trails were designed and built to be technical and exciting for cross-country skiing on frozen ground. And they often included unsustainable steep grades. So these numerous sections are susceptible to erosion as they do not effectively shed water. And the considerable increase in park usage in recent years has accelerated the trail damage on these areas. As the Edson Cycling Association, we have kept international trail standards in mind while building the new trails and repairing the existing ones. So maintaining watershed and armoring the tread have been some of our main focuses. And during construction and repairs, we have used our own Edson cycling tools. And as well volunteers have also brought out their own ATVs, power saws and fuel. And speaking to the caretakers role, they have been absolutely fantastic to work with. They have, they take care of mowing grass and down trees on the original wide trails as well as garbage and recycling collection. And then the campground duties as well as outside of our knowledge base. So just the trails part. And we greatly appreciate the ability to partner with them. For trail maintenance, we have held weekly trail nights and a few workbees a season. And that's from 2015. We've done that. It's worked fairly well. So the trail nights are once a week and last two hours. Workbees have been on weekends and run for about eight hours. This maintenance has been performed both on Crown Land Trails and on existing trails. For other routine maintenance, volunteers have come out after work on their days off. Activities have included whippersnapping, boardwalk decking replacement, tree clearing and reshaping grade reversals. Whippersnapping in particular is a considerable workload and has to be done multiple times a season. Sometimes for full trail length because Wilmore is, has some very aggressive growth. For trail repair, since 2015, we have also done a lot. We've built additional boardwalks on Pine Connector, Pine Trail and Spruce Trail. We've created a bypass around the large North Pine Trail ground seat. And tread was reshaped and armored on eroded sections of Cliff Trail. For last year was very challenging due to the high water table and frequent trail use. Material costs were well above average for these repairs. We performed a comprehensive tread and drainage repair and added more boardwalk to Pine Connector and Pine Trail. And looking forward to 2021, boardwalks need to be extended and some tread needs repair on the overflow Spruce Trail and Route 66 trail loop. So this page shows a breakdown of the Pine Connector Trail repair that we did last year. And I'm not going to go over it in detail. Hope you've had the PDF to go over prior to this, but essentially we did comprehensive drainage work and we put in armorment. This section was only a few hundred meters long, but took hundreds of hours to complete and thousands of dollars to repair. But it will last underdressed for many years to come. Boardwalks. So to deal with the numerous flat areas in the park that do not have natural watershed and do not drain effectively, we have had to build boardwalks in order to maintain access. These trucks are, these structures are absolutely mandatory. So far, we've built hundreds of meters of boardwalk in the park. And they do need to replaced over time and is a major cost factor for maintenance. We are looking into alternatives that would have longer lasting elements to them before needing replacement. And here's a summary of our material cost for maintenance for 2020 and 2021. The totals $9,200 and that is actually above that because we've now found some other areas that do need to be addressed as well. We did have a large amount of rough cut wood that was donated from West Fraser back in 2016. That is no longer usable as well as treated poles from Briscoe. We are now of those. We're fully running on newly purchased material. With that in mind, the Edson Cycling Association is requesting annual financial assistance to cover costs of maintenance supplies needed for trails on town land. This would include boardwalk materials, screenings and crush. It's funny, would strictly go to trails on town land. Unused funds would go back to the town of Edson. Town funding would help ensure that the trail system stays safe, sustainable and fun for all park users. We would like to ensure that trail maintenance and repairs are consistent. Having a financial buffer would help with long-term sustainability in challenging years. So we're asking for annual funding request of $5,000 for town trails. And moving on to the Edson Bike Skills Park. With the completion of the Edson Bike Skills Park last year, Edson now has one of, Edson now has one of the largest and most distinguished bike parks in the province. It has been amazing to see the growth in popularity and the positive impact it has had on our community. The fully progressive and diverse features in the park have brought in a wide range of demographics and have been able to accommodate any ability from beginner to expert. Like the trail system, the bike skills park has given our residents an opportunity to keep active during this pandemic. The large eight acre sized bike park has allowed users to spread out with ease. It has been phenomenal to see this project come to fruition and meet its potential. Especially in times when mental and physical health has been of utmost importance. Beyond our community, we've seen a considerable amount of out of town traffic come through the bike park, both for day use and multi-day use via the campground. We have seen groups from Edmonton, Orsa, Saskatchewan, Vellmount, Devon Bike Club and the Stoney Plain BMX Club come out to the park multiple times. The attached campground has proven to be of key importance for extending user time there. Some groups have booked multiple sites at a time. Those of you that have downloaded the PDF version of this presentation can see some great out of town reviews in the testimonial section. It also shows Edson maintaining online relevance while outside our geographical location. Driving for hours to visit this facility is a big deal. Moving on to maintenance, we want to ensure that, sorry, moving up here. It is absolutely critical that maintenance is consistent throughout the season and that a thorough session is done at least once a season. So this will help mitigate risk and liability from a safety standpoint. And in doing so, user enjoyment will also continue to be strong if this maintenance is kept up. So we want to ensure that the speed and angles on some of the features that park users have grown accustomed to stay the same. For example, this is very important for users taking off and landing safely on jumps. And the Edson Bike Skills Park is a destination facility and to keep it successful, a heightened performance level is required and that takes an immense level of care. Maintenance workload will vary from season to season, of course. So for high precipitation years, that will result in a heavier workload. Hoots Inc., so that's the designer builder of the bike park. So Hoots and the Edson Cycling Association have implemented numerous erosion mitigation tools and techniques to keep the bike park maintenance costs and workload down. So those include extensive drainage installations, containing culverts, pipes, swales, erosion blankets and other natural deceleration materials. And we will continue to monitor and adjust our sustainable sustainability model as the park usage evolves. And aside from park sustainability, there is volunteer sustainability. So we'd like to keep volunteer motivation high and reduce burnout and that volunteer sustainability is critical. For volunteer work, maintenance that can be addressed by volunteers includes vegetation control, fixing or replacing wooden features as well as drainage work. And to aid inconsistent and effective maintenance, Hoots has created a comprehensive maintenance manual to help ensure proper upkeep of the bike park. So this is a 50-plus page document. There's also a separate breakdown checklist that has been created that can be used on site. So both the town parks and community services departments have this manual as well. Of important note, this manual includes recommendations to have technical maintenance be performed by a professional crew and that segues us into our next topic. So to address these more technical aspects on critical dirt features, we would like to hire Hoots Limited. So they designed and built the bike park. They have a deep understanding of the various areas, technical dirt features and nuances of the facility. The more technical aspects refer to takeoffs and landing transitions of jump lines along berms, rollers and other critical dirt elements. We want to ensure all features continue to meet their design intent. Special attention would be given to carrying out final shaping, compaction, tuning and test riding of all dirt features. So Hoots carries out maintenance activities for a number of their bike park projects in the western regions and across Canada on a regular basis. And the closest example of this annual professional maintenance is in Hinton. Being new, the Edson Bike Skills Park is exciting and currently performing at a very high level. And we want to keep this model of safety and performance for many years to come. The Edson Cycling Association would like to hire or have the town of Edson hire Hoots on an annual basis to make this a reality. Regular volunteer park upkeep, volunteer park upkeep will continue throughout the season, but we do not want to solely be dependent on that. It's not a sustainable model and may lead to premature volunteer burnout. Hoots would be available to be in our area for season start. And that's the most ideal time to have this larger maintenance being done. Other areas do not have that luxury. Hoots' local availability may also help with equipment mobilization costs. Taken here is a screenshot of part of the quote from Hoots for one of the more, the larger dirt jump areas. So the progression jumps as a beginner and intermediate jumps for a full tune on those would be just over $3,400. And to do the whole bike park thoroughly would be just over $30,000. In summary, the Edson Cycling Association is requesting annual funding for the maintenance of the Wilmore Park Trail System and the Edson Bike Skills Park. And I should say, we're requesting annual funding request for the bike park at $30,000. So just below Hoots Inc.'s quote. Again, unused funds would go back to the town or routed alternatively based on the town's recommendation. There will be full transparency with all expenditures, of course. Reports would be supplied. We will, we will continue to put volunteer efforts forward to both trails and bike park maintenance and strive to drive down the funding cost requirement. So we're asking for a total annual funding request of $35,000. And that is the presentation. There is other slides, but I, it is 7:16. So I'm going to turn my screen share off and await questions.
Thank you, Mike. Way to stick to the timeline. I'm impressed. I will open it up to council just before we start. I do want to say a huge thank you to you and all your volunteer base and your wife, who I know have spent hours and hours and hours of time out there creating our beautiful new park and our trails. So thank you to that. I see Mayor Sahara has his hand up there. Go ahead.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Curry. And thank you, Mike, very much for your presentation here this evening. And Councilor Curry took the words out of my mouth. You have created a gem in our community. You and all the volunteers and all the businesses and industries. So thank you so much for your incredible dedication. Without question that has put Edson on the map. I was out there quite a few times this past summer interacting with people and the one individual came out for the day from Edmonton. He was heading to Hinton, heard about Edson, stopped. And he was very upset because he should have brought his wife out and stayed the night and the entire weekend because he loved it so much. So stories like that are going to be happening more and more. We only had a short season last year for people to utilize this facility. And I think it's critically important that these assets are maintained. And I think this is an economic development tool for us to bring and encourage outsiders to come to our community as well as a great local activity for families. So just a matter of how do we fund this? But I do support making sure that is maintained properly. And I agree, we have to always be concerned about volunteer burnout. So using the best strategies to address it, I think is vitally important. So thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
Counselor Byer? Thanks to the Chair to Council and to Mike Stoner Walker. Mayor Sahara took a lot of my pointers that I was going to say. I've also seen and heard of people from other towns coming here specifically to use our facility from various sources. They've heard about it and without a doubt, every time I'm out there, I see a lot of activity in the bike park, especially in the summer. I know I've tried it a few times myself on my, my, my cheap bike and it's a lot of fun. So something that I'm concerned about is the volunteer burnout. And we've seen that in other organizations in town, how things can go so great, so great, so great. And then all of a sudden they can go so wrong so quickly. Especially when there's the financial obligation involved. That can certainly be a stressful situation and I don't want to be putting your group into that. I do support funding this on an annual basis and we certainly need to find out where we're going to get that money from. But I think this is a critical asset in our community for our locals to experience, especially those that have never been out to Wilmore Park that don't know it exists, as well as something to help with mental and physical health. And if we can bring other people here and then our local businesses can use what they need to do to draw them into their businesses after they've already come here. So thank you very much. And thanks for all your 40, 4,300 volunteer hours in the past six years. So that's pretty phenomenal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Rokinson?
To the Chair, Mike, thank you so much to you and your group. That number of volunteer hours really is to me just the biggest motivating fact about the whole thing. And I do feel we need to continue funding it for you. I would like to ask how the town could help you advertise this? Do you have any ideas?
A few. So one of which is the town website. And I will be in touch with Mr. Best G regarding updating the Wilmore webpage. There is elements of the bike park in there, but that can be flushed out a little bit more. And then perhaps there's, there's bolstering online you can do to, to boost posts, so to speak. And so there could be potential for advertising the bike park that way. And perhaps within other groups as well, but want to avoid spamming groups like the Edmonton Mountain Biking Group, but a few ideas anyway. So updating the webpage and then perhaps boosting posts on social media. Sites like Facebook.
And I just have a follow-up question. Is that alright Chair?
Yep.
Alright, do you, like you had talked at one time with competitions out there and stuff. So do you need picnic tables, benches, grandstand seating? Like where is the future going in that way? How about washrooms? Like the facility is sufficient?
Yes, great, great points there. And I do want to go back one question actually and bring up the relevance of the signage on our highway, just a couple kilometers west of Edson. It's been up for years. And they pay tens of thousands of dollars to have the sign up. So it's the Vellmount Bike Park. Have a giant sign just west of Edson and they keep paying for it. So maybe that's something to look at as well to have the Edson Bike Park on the highway as well. And then to address the other questions for facilities, talking with Hoots about seating within the bike park area, that's a tricky one. So we do have some picnic tables. We do have more coming. One was stolen. We, we have to, we have to anchor these things to the ground. Having seating within the dirt jump area, that creates a bit of a hazard. So we'd have to be strategic with seating, but that is important. And with events, absolutely. Because some of these, as you know, it's fully progressive. So little kids on run bikes can do it, but also experts. So we did have some people come out at, at national level freestyle and could do backflips and tail whips off, off the pro line. And so it is possible to have full-on competitions here in Edson and that could bolster people coming into town as well, having those events. As far as outhouses, we did look into it and it fell outside of our budget. So we, to have a good outhouse, you're looking at 20 to 25,000 dollars. So this would be a full concrete structure like the county has or, or some of the base concrete and then vinyl wood structures that Jasper, Jasper National Park has. But the concrete base is key and an open area. So it can be washed out. But they're, yeah, they're a bit pricey.
Oh, they are. And I guess maybe if we advertise well, you might have donors come out of the woodwork. You never know. You know, I think they, they really have got it all in their shelter pods. So hopefully. But thanks for the update on this. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Bevan?
Thank you to the Chair. I guess thanks, Mike, for the presentation. It was great. I've been out there a few times myself and it's been excellent. My kids have been out there. They don't have to travel to Hinton. Now they throw everything in the back of their pickups and come out there. So which is very nice. But I guess my question is to Sarah is what does the Wilmore Park bring in for revenue out there from all our campers and stuff like that? Do we have funding there that we could help put this in for the funding? Because I do support Mike and his group in that. And I'm just wondering what type of funding we have, okay, the revenue we have from out there.
Through the Chair to Council Bevan, I believe the revenues stays with the caretaker. And then they use that to do some of their work out there. I don't believe it actually flows through the town's books at this stage.
Yeah, I can, I can confirm that, that we don't actually have any revenue from Wilmore Park. It stays with the caretakers as part of their contract and that's how we pay them.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselors, anyone else? Counselor Sharnard?
Hi, Mike. Thanks for your presentation. I got two questions, one loud. What is your total funding? I'm going through it. It can't be $9,000 you're asking for. What's the total funding you're, you're looking for per year?
No, sorry. There is a few pages with numbers on them. So the total funding we're asking for is $35,000. So 30,000 would be geared towards Hoots and the bike park maintenance and then $5,000 would, would be trails.
Okay, yeah, that's a question I was trying to find. The other question I had, and it's kind of a loaded question. With the bike park now, how is the interaction with dog walkers and hikers? So the people that would normally walk dogs out there and hikers, is it good cooperation or is it creating a problem? Just curious.
No, that's, that's a great question. It's, as far as I could tell, it's been great. I haven't seen any feedback otherwise. And after it was fully open, I was, I was out there quite a bit with my wife trying to learn how to jump a bike again. And so I think the, the access through that covert is, was critical and maintaining success for not having any user conflict. So there is multiple routes through the bike park and they do go around or under the, the features. So the dirt jump area, if you look at the heat map on one of the sides, you can actually break down which parts of the bike park are most popular. And the dirt jump area would have the highest potential for conflict with, with the dog walkers or hikers. And it's, it's been okay due to that covert in place. There was, this is just one time that I experienced, somebody had a dog and they were, they had their dog on, on the bike park features. So we, we spoke with them kindly and, and they put their dog on a leash because the, the feet can deteriorate the features a little bit quicker. But yeah.
Follow up. The reason I was asking is because we had people come out to our dock diving event. And they camped at Wilmore and they walked the trails and they discovered there was a cool bike trail and they're from Manville. So the husband was sent home to get the kids bikes to come back to ride the trail. So, and they just loved it. And that's the reason I was asking because originally went there to walk dogs unaware. I didn't even think of it telling them it's bike park. So the husband had a six-hour round trip to go get kids bikes so they could enjoy it. So thanks for the part.
Great, thanks.
A C L, C A O Bedner?
Through the Chair to Council, I just wanted to bring forward that every year we have promotional videos in the budget. And next year we have actually put one of those aside to do one of those promotional videos for the bike park. So we looking at promoting the bike park.
Thank you. Counselor Byer?
Thanks. Through the Chair to Administration, where would you guys expect to take this money from or have you considered that yet?
Through the Chair to Council Byer, we would have to look into that to find where that comes from. The, the bike park itself is going to be one of our assets. It will go on our books as one of our assets. And I, what I foresee is a, a type of operations maintenance agreement between us and, and the bike club. Just to sort of get everything all in one place. So we both understand who's responsible for what and that kind of thing. So we would, we'd have to look at where that funding will come from and we can maybe bring some options forward to Council.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Bevan?
To the Chair, to Sarah and Matt. I don't know if we, I think we might have talked about this one time or touched on it, that we should maybe start looking at putting some funding away for like our Wilmore Park, Lions Park and stuff like that. Is there, can we take a look at that and try to put something in our book so that we can put something to it every year? So that we have something that we can give out to these parks like this to keep them up in that?
Through the Chair to Council Bevan, we certainly can look at that. There's different ways. We either, you know, if we decide we're just putting money towards that without changing anything else, that would be in addition to taxation. Or we look at other things that we might take off and move towards that instead. But that's always a much, we're always wanting to put things aside for reserves, but sometimes it's just not financially feasible for any given year, but we definitely would like not financially feasible for any given year, but we definitely would like to 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 start building up our reserves for for this and and for a lot of other things that we have going as well.
Mary Sarah?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through to Mike Serna Walker, just a question for you. I know you mentioned that you'd like to get Hoots Inc. out here beginning of the season. So when would you need to know a decision for this year? We would have him in mid June and it is partially based on on when he will be booked in Hinton. So having him in a close location will will lower costs. So we want to, like regardless of town funding, we want to bring them in to to do at least some work. And so the sooner the better, as far as a hard date that we would need to know by, we we don't have that.
All right, Counselor Byer?
Thanks, through the chair to Mr. Serna Walker. You mentioned in the presentation that there would be an initial annual or possible annual work that would be done and then some work kind of throughout it. But how does what does that entail? Is that all included in that thirty thousand lump sum?
No, that's a good question. So that comment was a combination of volunteer efforts and the hiring of hoots. So hiring hoots is strictly a five day process where five to eight guys come in and and do a clean sweep of the bike park with machines in place. So that would also entail at least partial closures of jump areas because we'll have mini excavators on these features. So some of the the larger pro line features simply can't be put back in place by by hands with some of the really steep angles. So there's the five day hoots and then for the rest of the year, that's all volunteers. So things don't magically stay good through the rest of the season. July, of course, is is the highest precip month for Edson. Historically, that's just how it is for the last thirty years. So July, we have to to brace for high precip. And then after volunteer based, tune up up the jumps best as best we can. And so it's a combo. So hoots initially do a full professional execution and then volunteers do their best to upkeep. Till there's no hits.
Mary Sahar?
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor Curry. Through to administration. So would you be proposing to bring this back to a future committee meeting for further discussion? Particularly for this budget year and then we can buy ourselves some time for the more annual grant request.
All right, anyone else? Okay, well, thank you very much, Mike. I am also in support of this. From day one, when I moved here nine years ago, I have been a regular Wilmore user and I can say that you guys have changed it drastically. I used to run into nobody. And now I always see people out there. I think not only have you brought the bikers in, but you've created a level of safety. I think that was a lot of the time why people didn't use it. It felt really, you know, just less safe because there was not as many people around. And I think a lot of the time, that's why so many people are comfortable. So to go out now, I know not too long ago, a couple of weekends ago, there was zero parking available because people are out there using the toboggan hill and such. So I really do credit your group for bringing so many people out and having camped out there for a week this summer. I ran into numerous people. I actually didn't run into anyone that was there from Edson other than myself. Everybody was there and they were all there for the same thing. It was the week before you guys were shut down for some maintenance. And so they all came out, they all came out fast to use it. So it was so fantastic to see. So thank you very much and I look forward to Ms. Bitner bringing us some finance options on how we could budget this. So thank you very much.
Hey, thank you.
And you're always welcome to stay, Mike, but we also understand if you
Okay, well, I'll turn my my camera and mic off. And I did see on the agenda, there's there's questions at the end. Those are just posed to to counsel and and not related to this. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, okay. I will I will log out and and view on YouTube then. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thanks to you as well.
All right, moving on to the executive office, the Edson and District Public Library request. Ms. Bitner, are you taking this?
I will open it up, but I will hand it over to to Kayla who prepared the report and she's a little bit more versed on it than I am.
Thank you, C A O Bitner. So through the chair to council, I don't think this will be too big of a discussion. Administration just wanted to ensure that everyone's on the same page with what a motion would mean. Should it come forward at the next council meeting, supporting the library board with going forward with their detailed design? I know it was mentioned at the council meeting, you know, this is a conversation that council would like to have a strategic planning. You know, where are the buildings at within our asset management plan? How much do we want to spend on these buildings, you know, building maintenance plans? What's our plan after the multiplex? You know, what's our next project? Those kinds of conversations. So we just thought it was really important to be sure that if we if we make this motion, that it's it's clear to the library board that they they could move forward with that, but that does not guarantee the afterwards funding necessarily. And then it doesn't necessarily mean that there that the town will be willing or guaranteeing to put in that funding once they complete those detailed designs. And so it's just making sure that should they choose and should council choose to make that motion? What what that will mean for them and and maybe they want to wait to to make that detailed design until council can have a more robust conversation and then they don't, you know, detailed designs are can be quite pricey. So we would hate to see them spend their money on them and then council decide that that's not necessarily the direction that they want to move. So just making sure we're working with the library board and having very clear lines of what what that means, what emotion like that would mean and if they want to maybe wait until council could have that more robust robust discussion at S P S. So that is all I have to say and I will leave it at that and for council.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Parsons. I'll open up to council. Counselor Byer?
Thanks, through the chair to council and administration. So from the library perspective on this, I'll just speak to that first. In order for the library to move forward to gather any funding, there are organizations that have donated to other libraries that we've confirmed that. Larger libraries in the cities and elsewhere in smaller libraries, but they do require a commitment from the council before the the library boards are allowed to request any of that funding. So that's one of the reasons why the board wanted this brought to council, so they can move forward with those funding requests. As well as the the board is committed to, at their last meeting, they did commit, I guess officially or formally through motion to commit to the detailed design phase, should council proceed with it. And and as we know with the detailed design phase, we would gather more information on what the actual funding cost would be, right? We have a preliminary budget on that, but we would get the walls tested and there's different things that would happen to to see what the real funding cost would be as well. So the library board does realize that, you know, that it is a preliminary cost that we're given. I think it was about nine hundred thousand ish ballpark for the combined total. And in order to to go forward, then then we need more information to to do anything.
Thank you. Mary Sahar?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Curry. I I agree with what Ms. Parsons has said here. I think that we have to be clear that if they do want to go with detailed design, that's fine. It may be prudent for them to do that right now. So we have a better idea of what the actual cost of that's going to be. I don't think we can add a project of this magnitude to our budget this year anyway. But something that we can look forward to in maybe twenty twenty two. If we do have funds available, we also have to have a conversation with our partners at at the county. And I would encourage the library board to do a presentation to them as well. This is a joint use facility and there and as such, we would need to involve our partners in that discussion. Without question, it's I think that the need at the library has been there for quite some time, but there's some other discussions that need to happen and that's not going to happen overnight. We're going to need some time to work through those details. And also review our asset management plan and look at some of those other components. Right now, our focus is the multiplex and we have to be focused on that because we have a lot of work that we're going to be undertaking in the next year on that project.
Counselor Sorensen?
Yes, through the chair to Ms. Bitner or Ms. Parsons or maybe even Counselor Byer. I'm looking, does anyone know if the 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 library can wait until our strategic our strategic planning for a decision? Is is that an option? Because I think that would be the best from my point of view and I think from council's point of view.
Counselor Byer?
Thanks, through the chair to Counselor Sorensen. I believe that the firm that they used to engage to get where they are so far. Parker, can you turn it down, please? Can can likely wait. I don't know what their schedule is. They were prepared to move forward as quickly as the board was willing to. But I I think our strategic planning session is just in May, so that probably wouldn't be harmful.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Through the chair, I just thought at that meeting, they were wanting our motion, in particular Sheila Buckle, so that she could start a fundraising campaign. Maybe they'll raise all the funds themselves and I just don't think they could start any of that without a motion. And also, we can't spread ourselves too thin on committing for this, but if it's fundraised by someone else, it certainly isn't leaving us short. So just we'd have to know exactly what is going to be the outcome there.
And just my comments on that, I I thought that it was very clear in the presentation. Maybe I heard that differently. I thought it was very clear that we were not committing to any funds, but we were giving them the option to do that detailed design and fundraise. I don't think there is, as long as the library board is very clear that we might not choose to fund and they might have to do it all themselves. I don't think it's fair of us to hold back on allowing them to do their detailed design. Because they might still be able to fund that themselves. And that process takes time and it allows them to kind of look at that and see it. And I thought that that was very clear. It was brought up multiple times in that conversation that this was not a guarantee of funding. All they were asking for was the ability to do the detail and they do have the funds available to do that. To do that and they have funds available to improve capital, but can't do that without a detailed design. So I just don't really see why we as a council would hold them back on spending their capital funds they have right now, as long as we are very clear, which I thought was very clear and that motion would be very clear. That we are not guaranteeing and our strategic planning might go separate to that. Counselor Byer?
Thanks, through the chair to or to Deputy Mayor Curry, I guess, I suppose. Yes, I believe you're correct. So the board cannot proceed with any funding on capital until they have that approval from council through a motion. And a comment earlier regarding dues I lost it. Regarding the detailed design phase, so they they would have to gather that information, right? Like there's information that the board isn't aware of about the building, right? They did as much as they could and gathered as much information as they possibly could, but until you test the walls and test paint and do all these things, then they don't know what that position looks like either. So, yeah. I think the board is clear with that.
I think I think that one of the the good things about having a detailed design phase done is if there is a grant pot that comes available, say the provincial government says, hey, we're going to invest X amount of dollars into libraries in the province. Then they're set to go and that's, we were very fortunate that we had plans in place for the multiplex. That's the only reason we got twenty million dollars. Otherwise, we'd have missed the boat on that. Same thing happened with museums. So I think it's important to move to that next phase, but I I do agree, we need to be very clear that we are not committing to funding at this point in time until we can have a review of that through strategic planning as well as through our twenty twenty one budgetary process, which the new council will be delving into soonly, soon after getting elected.
Counselor Sharnard?
Hi, yes, I'm agreeing with the chair's comment about there was not be clear of funding, but I don't want to put the perception out that there could be funding. So I think there shouldn't be a panic. I mean, I'm agreeing with funding, but we should hold till we can discuss this more. Because like we're, I'm hearing all these studies and stuff. Ten years ago, the library board did a study and we put everything together. And I'd like the rest of the counts we brought to up to date of what the library has done over the last previous years, like the library has a lot of upgrading that has happened over the last few years due to funding. It's not. But the library has had a lot of money spent on upgrades, paint, carpet, et cetera. So I do feel where they're at. I do agree with the board. We got to do something, but also too, we should maybe wait a bit and talk about it and see, because they may bring us the perfect plan. And we're looking at, you know, almost a million dollars. They may get some grant like we're talking about and it only costs us a hundred thousand to do a million dollars where so. But I think they can wait. I'm in favor of upgrading the library, but I think we can wait and let's discuss it more, just in case we got to do matching figures.
Okay, I'm just, I'm a little confused, Counselor Sharnard, because you're saying they might come up with a great plan, but they have come up with a plan and they can't move forward with that plan unless we pass a motion. And we've been very clear that we're not going to give funding at this point.
But with that said, I mean, I'm hearing my other council members saying we should wait and discuss it more. And I did fully hear what they said when I outright asked how much money. They're saying none. So if they're going to agree one hundred percent, do the study with expectation of zero funding that I'm in favor of it. But I don't want to back them into corner because we may want to give the money and if they have a good plan and we don't have it in the budget, but if something comes along, I don't want to back them in a corner. They can't. But on the same token, so we're kind of caught. So if they can wait, we have a chance to discuss it more. I'd be more in favor of saying let's move forward with it.
Counselor Byer?
Thanks, through the chair to Counselor Sharnard and the rest of the council. The board is aware that our strategic planning session is in May and I I think they are hopeful. It's not a guarantee that if we they are able to proceed with the detailed design phase, that they would let the firm know that if we could have a report back before the strategic planning session, that way council could take a better look at it then. Because in order to look at it at all, we we need that detailed design phase as a council and administration to see what those costs would look like. So I I think that's what the board is hopeful to do if 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 everything works out in their favor.
Yeah, that that makes sense to me, Counselor Byer. That's where I'm confused why we're hesitating on this. We can't make any decisions at strategic planning without a detailed design. So I fully understand that we have to have a strong motion, like the perception aspect. I I felt like we were very clear about that, but that motion very clear to the library board that this means no fun, like no guaranteeing of funding, but there is no way to even make move forward without that plan. Counselor Wilkinson?
Through the chair to administration, do we have exact dates for our strategic planning?
I believe we do the first week of May. I understand Kayla, is that correct?
That's that's correct. I believe I sent out a calendar invite a while ago, but I could refresh it. Just to bring it back up. Yeah, you betcha.
Mary Sahar?
Yes, just to be clear, it's on May fifth, sixth and seventh.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, so moving forward, I think we need to know where council sits on whether or not this motion needs to come to a council meeting. Sorry, go ahead, Counselor Byer.
Thanks, through the chair to council. I believe the library board is planning on presenting this to the Yellow Hood County Council as well. I don't have a date, but I'm certain that that was already in the works.
Mary Sahar?
I'm fine with it coming to council for a motion to say that we are okay with them going on with strategic planning and that or the detailed design phase for that as well as if they choose to fundraise, that's up to them, but we are not in a position to commit funding at this time. And that will be discussed at strategic planning and as a part of our twenty twenty one budgetary process.
Thank you. Counselor Sorensen?
Yeah, through the chair to council, my my recommendation is that that motion, like I said, when they at the library presented the last time, that I'm in full support of their phase one and detailed planning for that phase one. I personally believe that spending a lot of consultant money and planning for the phase two is 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 not ideal right now. I don't think that's this is the right time to be spending that kind of money on that kind of on that planning. is not ideal right now. I don't think that's, this is the right time to be spending that kind of money on that kind of, on that planning. Because we need to discuss this, that strategic planning. So if the, obviously, I will support the motion. But ideally, the motion would be proceeded with phase one planning. Thank you.
Mary Sahara.
You talking about the short term plan, the medium term plan? Because if you're just talking about phase one, it makes no sense to do phase one and not do phase two, because those two kind of work hand in hand. There's the phase three, which is the longer term plan, which I don't think we're in any position to be at at this point in time. Just some clarity on that.
Counselor Sorensen.
Yeah, through the chair to the mayor. I thought there was two phases, the first phase, maybe maybe phase one was one and two, I'm not sure, but it was mostly safety and accessibility issues. And so I'm in, that's what I would call phase one, and that's what I am in full support of.
Where is everyone else sitting before this comes, so we know? Do we want it brought to council for a motion? Counselor Wilkinson.
I'd like it brought to council for a motion so they can proceed with their fundraising.
Perfect, thank you. Counselor Bayer.
Thanks. I think you guys know where I stand. I'm in support of them coming forward with the motion. But to allow them to proceed with fundraising for phase one and phase two. I think there is a little bit of bang for your buck when you are doing the phase one and phase two detailed design together. And and that combined, even though it wouldn't necessarily be funded by any particular organization all at once, it would just allow them a better scope and understanding of what those costs look like. Thanks.
Counselor Bevan, you're good in support. I saw your thumbs up. Thank you. Counselor Shannard.
Yes, I'd be in full support of phase one and two, as long as the understanding that there's no strings attached. I mean, all the power to them. Let's move move forward.
Okay, perfect. All right, any other last comments? Admit that gives you what you need? Perfect. Thank you. All right, moving on to corporate services. Busy in corporate services tonight. Draft financial reporting policy amendment.
Yes, this is, I'll take this one on as my other hat. We just would like a slight amendment to the financial reporting policy. At the moment, we have all the sort of quarterly reports coming to the second council meeting after that. We would like to amend that the year end one could be moved to the first council meeting in February. It gives us a little more time to bring all of the year end stuff together and to give you a little bit more of a better idea of what it's looking like. By the second meeting in January, which has to get to the agenda the week before, we don't really have a lot of the costs in. We haven't finalized a lot of the capital things and where they're standing. So we're just asking for an amendment to move that December 31st quarterly report to the first council in February instead of the second council in January.
Great, thank you. Counselor Bayer.
Thanks through the chair to administration. I'm full in support of this. I'm so happy that we are not reading check statements anymore. And if you need an extra two weeks to get everything done. So we have a clearer report and you're not staying at the office all weekend long till late hours of the evening. I I think this is a great idea. Thanks.
Perfect, thanks. Mary Sahara is good. Counselor Sorensen, Counselor Wilkinson, Counselor Bevan, Counselor Shannard, and I think it's also a fantastic idea. And thank you so much for the improvement in our financial reports. They make our job a lot easier, a lot easier.
Okay, so we'll bring that one forward next week.
Perfect, thank you. Moving on to draft fan franchise fee policy. Back at you.
Back at me, yes. So we're working on this one after discussion when we were doing budget about however year we come back with the franchise fee and what percentage we're going to do and looking back at fourth of what what the the revenue was. So the consensus that we got from council was that we would keep the same revenue plus CPI and then just adjust whatever percentage that might be from Fortis, so that we're getting basically that same revenue, but adding a CPI component to it each year. We're doing an average of the CPI for the year. We don't want to pick a particular month because maybe that month is an outlier and it skews it a little bit too much. So we would usually do a percentage of of 12 months of CPI and then apply that to to the franchise fee. And then when it's time to set that fee, we just bring it back to council with the appropriate percentage to get that amount of money.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, Counsel Bayer.
Through the chair to administration, when are you referring to the CPI, the Consumer Price Index or the Municipal Price Index? I know we've talked about that at budget, using the Municipal Price Index, which is slightly different than the Consumer Price Index. Is which one were you referring to?
In this case, we're referring to this to the Consumer Price Index. For electricity is something that's purchased by everybody, where the municipal one sort of hones in on municipal type purchases, so.
Anyone else? Counselor Sorensen.
Through the chair to council, I I am in full support of this this policy. I think it's fine to say we want to keep revenues where they are now and then just increase them by inflation. I think that's a reasonable approach. I think once in the future, it would be ideal in my mind to tie these franchise fees to the asset management plan to a specific asset, so. I'm just throwing this out, like I'm just pulling out of my head right now, but Fortis franchise fee tied to the to the asset management liability related to electrical lines or something like that. So it's just not. I think it's fine right now that we just say we want to keep revenues as is. But I think ideally it would be to tie it to an actual asset. Not operations, but the liability of that asset. Thank you.
Counselor Shannard.
Okay, through to Sarah, I actually disagree with tying it to tying it to it. I prefer reviewing it. It doesn't take us long. There's only two. It's power and gas. And I believe especially doing it now, we we should wait because in six months, we're all going to the to the poll. So we have no idea what it's going to look like. We should hold off on this, leave it for a review and let the new council of the day review it. And if they see fit, let's put a budget forward. So I'm going to just disagree.
Mary Sahara.
We're the elected council of the day, so we should be making decisions, not putting off decisions for somebody else to deal with. I completely disagree with that sentiment. I do believe that it would be best to have a policy in place to give direction as well as not being utilizing these funds to subsidize taxation, putting those funds to reserves, or as Counselor Sorensen said, tie it to the asset management plan somehow. So I'm in in support of this policy moving forward and it could be tweaked as council see fit in the future.
I'll just make a comment and then I'll go to you guys there. I I agree. I want to say thank you, C O Bitner. This is something that we had asked you to do. I find it very uncomfortable when that franchise comes to us because I do think it should be in policy. I think it should be a state's set thing instead of us discussing it, especially with the revenue involved in it. I do think the revenue definitely should be put to our revenues, or sorry, our reserves, as that's the purpose of taking the franchise cost there. And I would be interested in seeing what you brought forward with Counselor Sorensen's comments, if it was something specific. But I really appreciate this. I think this takes the awkwardness out of that conversation. It's a policy. And I think that's how we should be making our decisions. Counselor Bayer.
Thanks through the chair to administration. Yes, I I am thankful you're bringing this forward as a policy. If I remember correctly, do either of the franchises require a motion by council to approve the current rate each year? If if we pass this policy as a motion, does that count for all the motions or does it still get brought forward on an annual basis just to pass it based on our policy? If that makes sense.
Through the 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 chair to council, yes, that makes sense. No, every year we would still have to come back and go through a resolution for the actual percentage that we're applying. So this would just give us the the dollar amount, and then we would come back for the for the percentage to get us that dollar amount. So you'd still need to do those resolutions each year.
Anyone else? Okay, I think we do need some clarity. We don't, I don't think it's clear here for C O Bitner, whether or not she can bring this back or not. So just if we can get a thumbs up or down if you are in support of this. Okay, there you go. Is that good for you?
That's good. Thank you very much. We'll be seeing that next week as well.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, draft purchasing policy amendments.
So a number of years ago, I think it was 2016, we didn't really have a very robust purchasing policy or purchasing sort of plans within the town. So we built the purchasing policy that that is attached at that time. Since then, there's been some changes in our in our structure, changes in some of our procedures, and also council wanted the the inclusion of a taking a greener approach for our procurement. So we're just bringing this policy back now with those adjustments in there. You'll see on page two of the policy in the blue there, we've added the paragraph for buyers committing to procurement for the use of reusable, recycled, environmentally reasonable, sorry, responsible goods and services, etc. So we've added that that paragraph and to make people they need to be aware of the greener side of things when they're doing their purchasing. Our signing authority limits, we've updated. We had a change in structure. We no longer have directors. We have general managers. We also now have senior managers, which we've added a slightly higher amount that they can sign for. And the ability for the C O for be able to temporarily increase a particular signing authority for a very specified amount of time. And then moving further down, it's just a a lot of the rest of it is just a lot of change in verbiage, moving directors to general managers, etc. And then just updating on some of our actual practices that may have changed slightly from when we first did this nearly five years ago now. So I'll leave it open for any questions you might have now.
Thank you. Counselor Bayer.
Thanks through the chair to administration. I'm fine with all the changes in the financial values with the senior managers and general managers and the C O. My question is regarding the greener procurement. How do you confirm that someone is actually purchasing green or doing things as we are expecting them to or intending them to and not just saying that they're just going to try their best and and hope that it works out? What kind of a follow up or feedback or how much do you delve into a contractor when signing on with a green procurement policy?
Through the the chair to council buyer, for for larger things like that we send out for tenders or RFPs, we can obviously have that written in there and have that as part of the scoring of of any particular vendor that might put in an RFP or a tender. For the the other purchases, we're working on guidelines for those so that managers would have an idea on on what to look for for those. We we do have to to weigh up the time it might take to look for those versus, you know, if if we're buying something very small, but for those larger things, we're preparing guidelines for the the managers and the people that would do the purchasing.
Counselor Sorensen, then Counselor Wilkinson.
Yes, through the chair to administration, I I I'm in support of this policy amendment. And I do appreciate the paragraph on green procurement. It was, it's been a desire of mine for for the entire term, so I'm glad to see it achieved. And as well, I would like if if council supports my idea, I think this should go to youth council for comment. One, it's almost every time we have a meeting, they ask us about our our more or less green procurement policy and where we're sourcing things and if we're if we're asking the right question. So I think it's, it would be appropriate to ask them for their for their comment. Thank you.
Counselor Wilkinson.
Through the chair, yes, Counselor Sorensen, I agree with the youth council for sure. It's their future. And thank you very much, Ms. Bitner, for the work on this. I love the green procurement part. And on two there, you have the concept of best value includes, but is not limited to the following. And then your environmental sustainability is K, like the last. Is this put in order of importance or not?
Through the through the chair to council, because no, they're just listed as they are. They're not they're not there in any order of importance.
Okay.
And I just take these into consideration sort of thing, yeah.
All right, just a second comment. I do believe through the construction industry and environmental industries, there are standards already for green procurement. I'm sure that we could get information from them. I think this is just so absolutely vital that we carry through with this is one of the most important aspects of our purchasing. So thank you.
Mary Sahara.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I was happy to see that in number four with the green procurement, it did mention economical. One of my main concerns is that we're going to drive costs up for products and services by going, utilizing the green policy, but it clearly states in there that it has to be economical as well. So I think finding that balance is always important, and I think it's important to note as well. This was a key recommendation coming from an audit done by the Edson District Recycling Society here three years ago, four years, three years ago. So we are basically have checked off after this, well, we have checked off all the boxes as part of their their audit. So I'm in support of of moving this forward. And I also agree that it'd be great to give youth council the opportunity to provide some input before we bring it back to council.
Counselor Shannard.
One question and then a comment. Sarah, who is N W P T A? Refresh my memory. Do we keep referring to these guys?
Put me on the spot.
Well, I just want to know how powerful they are because I disagree with their.
They used to be called Tilma, which I knew that was, but it's Northwestern trade. I honestly, I'll have to look into that before you get back to you. Maybe the mayor knows.
It's the Northwest Partnership Trade Agreement.
There you go.
Okay, and the reason I'm asking that because the one comment I don't like is when we go to three and I don't know if we can change it, when we come down to E and we're prohibited for discrimination of local buyers of every purchase up to 75,000. So in my mind, most of the time of an item of that expense would refer to automobiles. And with Ford deal, well, three and a half dealerships, because I don't know Honda sells or not. I'm in favor. I don't care which product we buy, but if we're buying a vehicle, I think we should give our local buyers some kind of advantage since they do pay us taxes. So the rest of it, I agree with. I was just trying to figure out if we could clarify this a bit and, you know, to help them give advantage.
And through the through the chair to Counselor Shannard, it's actually legislated that we cannot give advantage to local suppliers for any of those purchases over those amounts. Before that, we do have some local things that we're taking into place, but we cannot give any any advantage to local suppliers on those purchases.
Okay, I was just looking for a new a new battle, but that was just my comment.
But that's a huge battle. I think that's a national battle. Counselor Bayer.
Sorry, that was just through the chair to Counselor Shannard. My comment was just that one of the legal seminars we went to a few years ago said that that is the law and that we don't get to go beyond that and our legal fees would be astronomical. So unfortunately, we have to abide by that and our current policy reflects that. Thanks.
Counselors, or sorry, Mary Sahara.
Yes, Madam Chair, and I should note that part of what's been going on with COVID with the provincial government, I know there was a strong push to have some of those rules lessened because of the economic challenges everybody was facing in the province. And there was no support from the other provinces to do that, unfortunately. Because I I agree, it would be best if we could always purchase locally or at least Alberta made. But unfortunately, with these agreements, we're unable to. But things such as vehicles, those are usually sourced locally because they are under that threshold due to fleet pricing and that sort of thing. So the local suppliers have the opportunity to bid on that.
Counselor Wilkinson.
You know, seemingly we all disagree with this. Northwest, whatever they are, to decide where we can buy, we are encouraging everybody to shop locally and then we have to follow this. So I think we need to put in a resolution at A U M A or put pressure on the government, at least a letter saying we just do not agree with this. Especially in these COVID times, we need to support locally. And I do believe that people understand that. So hopefully this could be changed.
Counselor Sorensen?
Yes, through the Chair to Counsel, I just wanted to point out that often locally sourced products are the most green products because they do not have transportation costs. So you could argue it that way. Thank you.
Right.
Okay, thank you. I also support this. I really appreciate the changes. We asked for that and it's so great to see it in here. And it looks good. Definitely needed some updating. It's been over five years. That's a good sign.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So from what I understand, you'd like me to wait until after youth council to bring this back for its readings at council?
Yeah, I also support it going to youth council. Counselor Byer?
Through the Chair to Council and Administration, our next youth council meeting is this Monday coming up, March, where am I at here? March 1st, and I believe we meet on March 2nd as a council. So I, I am sure that we could probably get it added to the agenda at this point for next week's Monday youth council meeting.
I will, maybe I'd leave it as a sundry, just in case anything comes out that, that you want to discuss about it before it goes in. So you may not see it in the agenda, but we can, even if it waits till the next one, it's not. It's been like this for five years, so a couple of weeks, we're probably okay.
Perfect. Good. Thank you very much for all of those. And now moving on to community and protective services, the business license application for the new taxi company. Mr. Schramm, are you doing this one?
I am doing this one.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's pretty straightforward. We've had an application from a new taxi company to start service in our community. And as for our business license bylaw for taxi services, they need to be approved by councils. We wanted to have the committee the opportunity to review it, ask any questions they may feel appropriate prior to bring it to council for resolution. So I'll leave it to for questions.
Thank you. Open it up to council. Counselor Sorensen?
Through the Chair to Council, I have submitted a notice of motion on taxis. And I'm hoping that we can discuss that in the very near future. I'm just wondering, maybe, maybe Mr. Schramm can answer if, if we did give them a permit and then changed policies after that? How complicated would that get? Thank you.
Yeah, for the Chair to Counsel, it really depends on what policy changes we would institute. Our current business license has some very stringent rules already. And this company is going to meet those rules. They're already set up operating out of Hinton, which has very similar rules. But any policy changes that we make would apply to all taxis. If there's new technologies and new things we're asking, they would have to follow those.
Counselor Byron and Counselor Ruckington?
Through the Chair to Mr. Schramm, I realize taxis are a different type of company and there's different risks and safety things involved. But why, why are taxi business licenses being brought to council?
Good question. In our current business license bylaw, which is being reviewed, it's, it's in the bylaw and that is the sole purpose. As we do a review of that business license bylaw, we can definitely address, you know, the need for the approval process. But in our current bylaw, it states it has to come through this process. So that's what we're bringing it forward.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Through the Chair to Al, doesn't our policy say that the taxi company has to have three taxis? So wouldn't you have to bring it forward to us with one? And I was just wondering, what size is their fleet in Hinton?
Yeah, through the Chair to Counsel, that is correct. Our current bylaw does state they have to have three. The current application is an owner operator. He has one taxi and he just wants to be able to expand to provide service in our community as well as Hinton.
Right. Do you know how many he has in Hinton out of curiosity?
He's operating one.
A one in Hinton?
He's an owner operator with one taxi who wants to expand to Edson as well as Hinton.
Okay, but no plan on expanding with more taxis in Edson necessarily?
Not as per his current application.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Counselor Shannard?
Hi, thanks, Al. Just sort of history, we've had a lot of problems with taxi companies over the long history. So there's a reason the bylaw is, and I wouldn't be so apt to all of a sudden jump in just bring in one. There's a reason there's supposed to be three. So I would really consider them because I'm not saying the guy's good or bad. But before we start changing any taxi bylaws, we really got to consider this. I would maybe do a follow-up back to him and exactly right, see what your plans are. Because if you're just going to come and do one, I believe there is a taxi company in town. There's one that's licensed, so we have to be fair to them. On the other side of the coin, we have discussed about special needs taxis, meaning, you know, handicap accessible and stuff. So I don't want to scare taxi companies away, but there's a reason this bylaw was put in place because of previous problems.
Mayor Sahar?
Thank you. And I, I believe it's a part of Municipal Government Act that there has to be some approving body. Because I know City of Calgary, City of Edmonton also approve all their licenses through a commission or committee or what have you. But I guess my, my thought on this is I know that, I guess the question through to Al is what happens when we have an existing cab company that's not operating with three cabs currently? We've seen ebbs and flows within taxi, within the taxi business in our community over the years. We've had issues in the past with cabs not being available. And I know that there's some challenges right now with what's going on with the economy. So, you know, and we also have the responsibility to ensure that there is public transportation available. And as we don't have L R T or buses municipally run, these commercial operators do provide them services. So I guess how do we, we square that with some of the challenges that we're facing economically and with what is going on currently within our community?
Yeah, through the Chair to Mayor Sahar, you're absolutely correct. The taxi business, taxi industry is regulated, that responsibility is downloaded to the municipalities. You know, I've done some research on this. And that is why one of the things that we want to do, and we've already begun this process through their protective services, we just review our existing taxi bylaw, which is in the business license bylaw, and start developing something that meets more current needs. There are some really good guidelines put out by the federal government on taxis. And because again, as you talk about taxis, we start getting into some of the new technologies like Uber and all these other ones. Those come into play. And that's why we need those regulations. The regulations that we're going to be bringing forward through our bylaw will address that exact thing. Thing is really public safety has got to be the forefront when we're starting to apply these. When we talk about public safety, again, we want to make sure that we have criminal record checks, that their vehicles are mechanically sound. But beyond that, some of the other things that some municipalities regulate is fares and fees and rates. That's all going to be addressed in a new draft bylaw that we are currently working on. It just doesn't exist today. But they are municipal responsibility at this stage and I don't see that changing.
Counselor Byer?
Thanks. Through the Chair to Mr. Schramm, you kind of touched on my question there a little bit and it's regarding the Ubers. So what's preventing someone from just having an Uber taxi, I guess, vehicle? And, and picking people up that way at the current state with current bylaws and current provincial or federal regulatory bodies?
Through the Chair to Counsel Byer, Uber is still regulated through the, through the taxi system. For example, in City of Edmonton, City of Calgary, they have to be applied to the City of Edmonton before they're operating business license. It'd be no different in our community.
Counselor Ruckington?
Through the Chair to Al. Just currently, I mean, you just hear people talking, we don't have any jurisdiction over like the cleanliness of any of these vehicles as well. Like that's almost a public safety issue. It seems they're maybe not kept as clean as what people would like in order to use a taxi. And you know, Mayor Sahar is right, we're not providing anything else. So it's a big responsibility in us as a municipality, I feel.
Yeah, if I can respond to the Chair to Counsel Wilkinson? As we develop our bylaw, we do have some abilities to, to make sure again that the mechanics fit, that they're doing some things. But, but doing that, there's a resource that needs to do that. And again, that would fall into our enforcement services team. And as we start developing this bylaw, they're key to be a part of that whole process to make sure it fits into their portfolio as well. But there are things that we can definitely address through a new bylaw and we are looking at that.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sorensen?
Yes, through the Chair to Mr. Schramm, is there, are we under any deadline to approve this permit? Like, do we guarantee decision within 90 days or something like that? If not, I would recommend we put this off until we can have a more in-depth discussion on taxis and public transportation. Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Byer? Oh, sorry. Sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Schramm.
Yeah, through the Chair to Counsel Sorensen. We can by all means hold off. It just means he cannot operate in our community until we approve this business license.
Counselor Byer?
Thanks. Through the Chair to Council and Administration, based on the conversation here and the current undergoing of another bylaw by our Protective Services Department, I'm in favor of putting this on hold and having a more robust discussion about it and kind of coming together with a consensus on what we want to have in a bylaw. That way we're not putting this business into a business and then pulling them out if they don't want to meet those requirements. That's where I stand. Thanks.
My question would be to Ms. Parsons about getting that on the agenda. My concern on putting it off is we have a major need in our community. So this is something we hear on a regular. I know it's only one vehicle, one taxi, but we have a definite concern. This is something I hear on the regular about how people do not have access. And so I just want timelines because if we're talking about putting this off for a month or two, I don't think that's fair to our residents. I think it would be better to have someone. If the reality is, if they are given a business license and they have to abide by our new bylaws, if the person cannot, then you know, that problem is solved there. So just to Ms. Parsons, when timelines, why that timelines wise, it could be put on an agenda.
Thank you, Counselor Curry. Through to Council, that would actually be a question for Al and where his group is at with that draft bylaw. If they have it drafted and in the state, we could get it on rather quickly. So yeah, it just really depends on where they're at with their draft.
Mr. Schramm?
I knew that was coming back my way. I know I've done a lot of work on it, have turned it over to some of my officers. I'll have to follow up with them to see where we're at, do a review of it. It will definitely not be for a few weeks, I'd say at the very most, but we can make it as a priority. And hopefully by the next committee meeting, potentially have a draft for, for this group. But again, I don't want to commit to that because I'm not sure the workload on my officers at this stage.
Mayor Sahar?
Yeah, I guess my concern is even if we do have a draft bylaw, we will need to have some discussions either through protective services with our existing operators in town. I don't think it'd be fair to start changing rules without at least having them the opportunity to respond to that bylaw. And I'm just worried, as you are, Counselor Curry, that timelines here. It's up to a business owner to determine whether or not it's feasible for them to operate, whether it's under existing or, or new bylaws. I would just say that if we do approve something like this, that it's clear that there is a current review underway and things may change here in a few months. And it sounds like he's not adding anything to a fleet. He's just going to be operating here on a part-time basis. So I'm not sure if there's going to be any major capital investment required other than just saying, yeah, you can operate here for the time being, as long as you have a license. That's kind of my thoughts. I don't want to put our existing operators in a bad position, but at the same time, we do have a need in this community and I hear it quite regularly that, that need isn't being filled right now.
Agreed. And I do like knowing that this is an operator who is successful in a different community. I think that says something to the applicant. Okay. Moving forward, where are people sitting? Can this be brought, brought forward? Are people wanting to wait until that review? Counselor Byer?
Through the Chair to Admin, if the, the applicant is very aware that it is under review and that there may be changes, I'm, I'm fine with them if they want to make that investment into our community. But I, I would look forward to seeing that review as soon as possible. Thanks.
Counselor Shannard?
Hi, yes, I'm going to agree with the mayor's comment. We need to wait. And in fairness, we can't go to a business and say, oops, sorry, we changed the rules. We need to approach them and see how they feel about it. If the individual is serious and he knows his three bylaws, the, the bylaws said don't have to operate. He can show up in town with three cars and he drives them. Because if the need is stronger and he's serious, he can come, but we need to wait and be fair to the other companies where we can't change the rules halfway through the game.
Counselor Wilkinson?
I'd like to see this brought forward with a clear explanation given to this company with the one cab, but also a clear explanation given to our current cab company. And I think it probably could be done in a week's time.
Counselor Bevan, Counselor Sorensen, where do you sit on bringing it forward?
I agree with the mayor here and that I think we've got to be fair to the other company and that. I know we all hear the same thing that, you know, the service isn't there right now. And he's in no hurry because he's already in Hinton. And he's looking at us, I think, you know, it takes a week or two weeks or whatever and that. I think he'll, if he was really in a hurry, he'd be pushing us, I believe. So I agree with what the mayor is saying.
I'm just going to clarify here, Mayor, I was under the understanding you said you would like to bring it forward because of the need that is in our community for a lack of service right now. So you would like it brought, brought up right away?
Yeah, so I would like, I would like it brought forward right away, this, this application for a decision with a clear expectation that there is going to be a review undergoing. And that review needs to take the appropriate time to ensure that our current operator has a chance to provide feedback as well.
Counselor Sorensen?
I agree with that mayor's statement.
Thanks. Okay. Mr. Schramm, does that give you enough information to move forward?
Yes, it does. So we'll bring back a recommendation to accept the business license. However, we will communicate to this new applicant plus our existing applicant that the bylaw for taxi service is under review and we should have something out in the near future for them. And, and we'll welcome their participation in that process.
Perfect. That sounds fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Schramm.
You bet.
Moving on to C P O one enhancement, I believe I'm giving it back to you. Oh, do we have Mr. Perry in for this one? Take?
Yeah, I'll be, go ahead. Yeah. Good evening. Thanks for having me, Madam Chair and Counsel. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. Okay, so we're here tonight to kind of give everybody here kind of a refresher and a rundown on community peace officer level ones, kind of what they are, what we're asking for moving forward here. So what is a level one community peace officer? Like level two C P Os, we're appointed by the province, by the Solicitor General. And we work for authorized employers. So town of Edson would be an authorized employer and we're the highest level of C P Os. And we operate under the Peace Officer Act and we're governed by some ministerial regulations such as the Peace Officer Program Manual. And we can enforce a wide, wide range of provincial statutes in addition to our municipal bylaws. So we're unarmed, but we carry O C pepper spray, or O C spray, batons, handcuffs and other tools necessary. So in 2018, we were mandated that level one C P Os do have to carry O C and pepper spray. Sorry, O C spray and batons at all times when on duty.
Sorry, OC spray and batons at all times when on duty. This is was a recommendation out of the on-duty death of Community Peace Officer Lazinby. Where CPOs are peace officers under the criminal code and although limited, we do have certain powers of arrest, detention, and search and seizure. And so, you know, what kind of level of service can level ones offer communities? The level of authority available to CPOs is standard across the province. However, authorized employers can tailor their services and what they kind of want through their CPOs based on the needs of their communities. So for example, you know, some agencies may want their CPOs doing moving traffic enforcement. Other agencies may may stipulate that it remains stationary. So in in general, that each level of authority that we seek, there's going to be training or recertification, policy, and procedure, and that kind of stuff based around that. So these are the standard provincial statutes that you'll see on on the majority of level one appointments, and this is what we're asking here today. So Traffic Safety Act, and this includes, you know, your your stationary and and non-moving and moving violations, commercial vehicle enforcement, dangerous goods, things like that. Liquor Gaming and Cannabis Act, tobacco and smoking reduction, trespass supremacists and petty trespass, environmental protection enhancement, peace officers, or sorry, Provincial Offenses and Procedures Act, Dangerous Dogs Act, and the Animal Protection Act. So some other authorities and abilities are executing provincial warrants. So oftentimes on on legislation associated to our appointments, people may be wanted on certain types of warrants. We do have authority to deal with those. We have authority to operate emergency response, so using lights and sirens to attend certain emergencies under certain circumstances, providing backup to our law enforcement partners, so the RCMP, sheriffs, community peace officers, things like that, one- and two-digit highway enforcement. And we can also apply for what we call enhanced authorities. So this includes things like theft under 5,000, fraud under 5,000, mischief under criminal code warrant execution. So dealing with more serious warrants and investigating non-injury collisions. And working cooperatively and closely with the RCMP, the Edson RCMP, our enhanced authorities allow CPOs to alleviate that call volume that they may have. So this allows the the RCMP to focus on more serious things and it allows us to, you know, to work more closely with the Edson RCMP, build our relationships, continuously learn and hone some of these really great skills. So why transition from level two to one? Well, part of that Lazinby inquiry was the need and the requirement for any level twos that is not working in a administrative or a photo enforcement capacity to be upgraded to a level one. This gives them all the same training, so everyone has a standard level of training and the tools, baton and OC spray that they must carry. You know, and for similar budget considerations as a level two, you're getting a much more robust level of service. And, you know, training and recertification is required for some of these authorities, you know, could be yearly or bi-yearly. Benefits of these, you know, working with the RCMP are so huge. And as I mentioned before, we alleviate some of that call volume that the Edson RCMP is seeing with some of these trespassing complaints or executing warrants, dealing with the petty crime when we get into enhanced authorities. And and certainly the non-injury collision investigations. And, you know, this is not only beneficial to public safety, but, you know, it's a huge impact to the way CPOs are perceived as well. So the process for this and the timeframe, the standard operating procedures are already in place. They're ready to be to be forwarded to the Solicitor General. So what happens is we forward these documents to Solgen, and we, officers receive an individual appointment, and they conduct their background checks to make sure that they are fit to hold an appointment. This takes around four to six weeks. And as soon as you receive that appointment, we'll be good to go to begin our enforcement duties. And we anticipate to begin this in the spring. So so if you have any questions you may have, that's that's it for my presentation today.
Thank you very much. I will open up Counsel to for any questions. Counselor Sorensen and then Counselor Bevan.
All right, through the Chair to Mr. Perry. Thank you for the presentation. That was quite clear. I'm a little worried about some of these acts taking significant time. What are CPO ones need to be like? I'm worried about how much time they would have to be in court for some of these acts. If they did charge someone and then would they have, would there be, you know, would they have to go to court for significant time and be outside of our community? Would they have to go to provincial court and that whole ball of wax? Thank you.
Yeah, through the Chair to Counsel Sorensen, absolutely. I mean, I mean, court is is a standard part of our duties. However, that being said, the provincial government has taken significant steps and is working to alleviate traffic courts. So they are moving to more of an adjudication system. So this will effectively all but eliminate the large amount of time that we'll be spending in traffic court. It's going to be a very different process. I can't speak on too many details because I'm not fully aware of them, but it is going to significantly streamline the amount of time that we'll be spending in court for traffic offenses. And and traffic is going to be the bulk, the bulk of our court time, and that's going to be taken care of by the provinces' change here moving forward.
Thank you, Counselor Bevan.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Perry, for your presentation here. I like option one here. But I wonder if that with option one, if we had an agreement saying that the RCMP must request the CPO one supervisor for certain assistance on the on some of these cases and that. Because I like what this says, but I know we have our own town bylaws we have to go looking at, you know, trailers, whatever, stuff like this. I don't want you guys to get all tied up with the RCMP, forget about our town and our citizens here and that. And I know whether we have two or three, you know, we can do it, but I I'm just afraid that if they're tied up a lot, you guys get tied up with them, and then we get kind of left behind. And I would like to have, you know, your supervisor saying, hey, you know, we can assist you, we can't assist you, we're not going to be moving bylaws on the on the highways, fourth and second avenue or something like that. And I'm not sure what you think about that.
Yeah, through the Chair to Counsel Bevan. That is a good question. So the Peace Officer Program Manual does stipulate, you know, you do have to be requested for certain types of emergency response. And obviously, certain types of of backup calls are going to be stipulated very strictly through policy and our standard operating procedures, making sure that number one, it's within the scope of something that we can help with, being that we're not armed. And, you know, and and it is a, you are the closest unit available, and there is a severe risk to officer safety that you're going to help. But absolutely, all this can be fleshed out in 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 policy and procedure and is, you know, moving forward with supervision and things like that.
Mr. Schramm, did you have anything to add to that?
I just want to talk briefly on this. Like Mr. Perry indicated, our goal to initially get set up is to have our CPOs the ability to enforce the acts that we presented to Counsel. The enhanced duties are something which will be part of our evolution moving forward and in good discussions with their Staff Sergeant Delisle or whoever their staff sergeant at the time. But I think originally, our main focus is to be able to have Counsel onboard that these are the acts that we want to move forward with the CPO level one program. And these are consistent across the province, the other CPO ones you're doing. And then those enhanced duties about the crimes under 5,000 and all those other ones will be something that as we go through our processes, we get those comfort zones and figure out our workloads that we'll bring back to Counsel to say, hey, we may be in a position to do some of this stuff. And again, that'll be direct cooperation with their local detachment. Because really, right now, that's their responsibility. It's just helping ease that workload for them.
Thank you. Counselor Byer?
Thanks. Through the Chair to Ms. Fitner. So it's my understanding we've already outfitted the vehicles for the CPO level one position. Is that correct? Yes, okay. Sorry to Mr. Schramm them.
That answer, so yes.
Okay, I saw I had not. And just another follow-up question to Administration. With the enhanced job description, is Counsel able to review the priorities of the CPOs on an annual basis at our strategic planning session? Or as we would see fit, if if we are hearing complaints in the community about other needs not being met, like what what their current role would be?
Al can maybe step in if I misspeak, but I believe we would be able to review those at SPS for sure because the the CPOs are our employees. Al, is there anything else to add to that?
I think the key to remember is you're absolutely right. Our CPO level ones are our employees. They will basically work out the philosophies that we presented them. Everybody understands that we've created a working philosophy of of education, information, and enforcement as our last resort. This just gives us the ability and the tools to be able to do a little more enhanced of that enforcement thing. We will develop some programs very specific. Again, even with moving violation, for example, we will pick some target times where we're going to hit the school zones, for example. But you're absolutely right. We do have our community standards bylaw, our public conduct bylaw. Those things need attention as well, and it's creating that balance as we move forward. That is very important to us to make sure that that we are meeting the needs. But ultimately, Counsel gives us their feedback and their direction, and Administration meets that direction.
Mayor Zahara?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Officer Perry, for that very insightful presentation. I am in support of moving forward with this. I think that it provides our community with an enhanced level of service. We pay a lot of money for RCMP, but their focus needs to be on some of those more serious calls, serious crimes. They're also, they don't, they're a contractor, they have federal responsibilities, provincial responsibilities. And if we need, we have a problem intersection, there's no, there's no guarantee that we will have that enforced by the RCMP if they don't have the resources at that time where with our peace officers, we can give that direction to to look at those areas. And I think it also will provide some enhanced service and assistance to our RCMP. Staff Sergeant King, when he was here, spoke highly in favor of moving in this direction. There are times where the RCMP are under resourced, where a CPO could be scheduled to work, provide that extra level of service. And quite frankly, when you're pulling over vehicles in residential neighborhoods and there's red and blue lights flashing, nobody's looking at the badge at the side of the vehicle, and criminals are going to move on to someplace else. So there there's a huge public safety aspect to this, but I I agree, we don't want to get too carried away with this. I'm really not in favor of moving into those enhanced areas until we really get our feet underneath us. Do have a question here through to Mr. Schramm or Officer Perry. How is ticketing going to work? I know that the RCMP use a system where it just prints out in the vehicle. And do we have cameras for our officers and in the vehicles as well as a safety tool? That's something that I'm very much in support of, not only for officer safety, but also for public transparency if there is a situation that occurs.
Through the Chair to Mayor Zahara, but yeah, like, I can, I think, answer this. E-ticketing is 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 a requirement as of the end of this year, so that is something we're looking at. And that's something that, you know, we do plan on bringing forward to Counsel, coming forward into, you know, into 2022 and what and what that may look like. Right now, we are set up for paper ticketing, the kind of status quo as it's as it's always been. And yes, our vehicles are equipped with audio video recording systems. And I'm currently working with IT to get the storage and the secure backup all finalized with that.
Thank you. Counselor Sorensen?
Yes, through the Chair to Administration. I'm a little confused. When I first read this, I thought the nine acts in this presentation were the total list of acts that we could apply for, but it sounds now that these are the ones that Administration is recommending to us. The reason I'm asking this because I'm, it's very important to me that that community protective services actually is is comfortable enforcing an act, not necessarily just because it's available, doesn't necessarily mean they're going to be comfortable to do it. So I'm really interested in hearing what their recommendation is, not just a total list. Thank you.
Would you like to take that, Mr. Schramm or Mr. Perry?
Yeah, yeah, through the Chair, I can, I can certainly take that. These acts are something I'm very experienced with. I had, you know, I had them in my appointments through my my previous life there in Devon and 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 several others of them in Parkland County as well. You know, we received training on all this. There's, you know, a plethora of courses that we can also take to better kind of harden and hone those skills. But certainly, I mean, this is something, you know, every, all of this is based on the needs and wants of the community, and and it can be tailored to suit a community's needs based on 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 what the on what the municipality sees fit for their officers to enforce. But this is certainly, only these provincial authorities listed these statutes, it's certainly nothing that would be above above our head.
Perfect. Thank you. Counselor Wilkinson?
Through the Chair, I was just wondering with this, it is mandated by the province to change CPO level two to level one. Have they put any money into this when they're saying that it's mandated?
Through the Chair to Counsel Wilkinson, not to my knowledge.
All right, and thank you for the presentation. That really made it very clear. I just see it costing us as a municipality for the e-ticketing, the vehicles, et cetera. We are helping the RCMP. I just wonder, does it lessen our cost for RCMP then? The money comes from somewhere, and it's very interesting when you get mandated, but no pay package to accompany it.
Mr. Schramm?
Yeah, through the Chair to Counsel Wilkinson. The mandate from the province was they were phasing out the CPO level twos to CPO level ones, and that was based on some of the criteria that had come up out of the Lazinby hearing and that. For us, again, our fleet didn't see a whole lot of impacts. Our current vehicles were a direct response to upgrades because our our previous bylaw vehicles had to be upgraded at the time. They were due for replacement. So it fit well, knowing that we were going to potentially move in this direction and that, so they were outfitted this way. What it will do as far as financial, and again, I don't know if I want to go down this rabbit hole, but it will. Any ticket that our officers issue is direct revenue back to our community. And again, this is not about generating revenue. It is about public safety. That is the key part of this, and it is about an enhancement to the RCMP not replace. We're there to complement them and enhance our public safety portfolio. Hopefully, that answers a little bit.
Well, yes, thank you for that answer, and it is nice to have the possibility of some revenue to offset these costs. And it isn't a money-making thing, but if you're going to get revenue, hopefully, it goes back into those enhancements that we had to have in the vehicle, the e-ticketing, et cetera. So thank you for that explanation, Al.
Mayor Zahara, then Counselor Byer?
Yeah, Mr. Schramm covered most of what I was going to say. And I think, too, it's important, I, you know, I don't expect, I would hope that our P or CPOs would not be doing traffic enforcement on the highway. We do have provincial resources that are there for that. I see I see our role as more in in some of those residential areas where we hear complaints of speeding and pedestrian safety. You know, things like, things of that nature, school zones, for example, where the police just, the RCMP just can't always deal with that with what's going on, where I think our CPOs will be able to provide that enhanced service. And we have a great working relationship with the detachments. I know that a number of officers would be more than willing to have the CPOs with them to help with any training and that sort of thing, and it really is to to complement each other.
Counselor Byer?
Thanks. Through the Chair to Counsel, I'm in support of bringing this forward. I think this is something that we've been working towards and discussing the past several years. That's my, been my perspective on those conversations, including with what Staff Sergeant Peter King had mentioned years ago. And I've already had comments as soon as Mr. Perry came to town and was riding around in the new vehicle. People were asking me because they noticed there were some bars in there, and they're asking if if you could take away criminals and what that looked like. So it's definitely been observed in the community as well as as well as the attention that I've noticed. And I've had several people comment to me about your your role around the school zones. People really have been enjoying. People really have been enjoying that, and I think that if we can provide an enhanced level of service to assist in areas that the RCMP generally just wouldn't put their focus on, because they have other, other things to deal with. I think that that would be great for our community and for residents. Thanks.
I would also just to make a comment here too. I also would support this and do support this. I agree with what Counselor Brier says, said. I feel like we've had lots of conversations about this. We've been moving toward this for a while. That was a part of the process of, you know, bringing Mr. Perry onto the team. So I am also very excited for it, mainly for the stuff that we are discussing. There are some enhancements to safety that we need in our community that are just exactly that, their RCMP do not have time. And especially with some of our speed issues within our residential area. And we hear regularly from our residents about that. And as a regular walker, it's one of my biggest safety concerns in the community. It is not currently a very safe community to walk in, due to those speed issues and pedestrian crossing issues. So I think it's great that we'll be able to enhance that.
Counselor Bevan?
Through the chair to the administration and that. I was supportive this year when I was on previous council, I asked about it and that, and it didn't go very far, but I'm glad now we are doing it. Can we get stats on a regular basis? When we go to this new system here, the CPO ones, to see what, what is going on? Like, we don't get a lot of stats right now on, on the protective services at all. I don't know what it's caused, since I don't know if they're bringing anything in. You know, quite a while ago, we used to get a previous council before that way back. We would get, we had protective services, we get a breakdown of everything coming in, say from the dog pound to whatever and stuff like that. Can we get stats on this moving forward, especially once they become CPO ones?
Yeah, through the chair to Counselor Bevan, absolutely. Everything we do is tracked through our reporting software, and it's all very easily, it's very easy to pull analytics and things like that. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Counselor Sharnard?
Hi, Tom, through to you. Just so I'm clear, if I'm understanding, the province said we had no choice. We got to go to level one. They're phasing out two. Am I correct?
Through the chair, yeah, to Counselor Sharnard. That is correct, unless, unless the town would see it better fit to downgrade to just simply bylaw officers. But to keep community peace officers in an enforcement role in the community out and about, they need to be level ones.
Okay, because I'm listening to all the comments and I agree, it's nice to have our bylaw with extra teeth. But on the same token, I don't want running around chasing speeders and et cetera. But if they do in a scenario comment, like they show up at a school zone or whatever area in town, they can be set up. I agree with the comment that if someone is actually pulled over and they're going, oh, oh my God, they're not just a bylaw. The next question, how many bylaw officers do we have right now? Because we enhance, that's time-consuming.
Through the chair, there's myself and Ms. Kiefler, Michaela Kiefler.
Okay, yes, so I'm all for it, you know, because it's all about safety. Bars or no bars, I do like the idea that you can show people that if you are breaking the law and the RCMP are busy, we have some way of going after it. So, thanks, Tom.
Okay. I think we've gotten lots of feedback. Do you have what you need from us, Mr. Schram and Mr. Perry?
Yes, we do. We will bring back a resolution to council next week to adopt the acts that we presented.
Perfect. All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much for your presentation, Mr. Perry. It was very clear and concise. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Have a good evening.
All right, moving on to the Canada Health, Healthy Communities Initiative grant. Is this?
And I will be handing that over to, to Al, and I think Tanya's actually got a presentation for us.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, we will let Tanya take the lead.
Okay.
Welcome, Ms. Briers.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I, so just, I trust that you've already had a quick look at the information that I've provided, so I'll, I'll make this fairly brief. So the federal government, they recently announced the Canada Healthy Initiatives program. So town representatives from Parks, Community Development, myself, Finance, Infrastructure and Planning, we've all been kind of working together to say, you know, what, what would be the best use if we were to come up with something really quickly? Because the timeline is very short. We collectively decided that going after this grant, which can go all the way up to $250,000, would be best served, just putting the concept to upgrading the rings either at Griffiths or Glenwood. The, this is one of council's strategic priorities, it's part of the Parks Green Spaces Plan. So we just thought it was probably the quickest thing that we could pull together in short order, because this is due on March 9th. So we don't have a lot of time. I, I'm just going to share with you a quick presentation here, and, and please note that this is just a really like high-level concept. It's in no way what we think we can or can't do, because there's a lot of research that still has to go into it. But just showing you, I guess, the, the concept of where we're headed. Okay, can everybody see the screen? Okay. So the concept itself is, so we're looking at either just replacement or upgrading these outdoor arenas. Some of the challenges that, that the Parks Department has been having is that the, the base of these, they're, they're very soft, they're not level, they're, it takes them a long time to be able to get them flooded because of the challenges that they do have and because we don't have that solid base in them. And, you know, certainly Guy, I think he's with us this evening too, so jump in if you want to add anything. So as you can see in the picture, this is the Griffiths one that's here, and it, it sounds like the one at Glenwood is, is much the same. What we're proposing is, you know, hopefully creating something that's going to be a more useful all-seasons type of space. And like I say, this is kind of, what you're seeing on the screen is, you know, a really, really nice concept, but it comes with a really, really big budget as well, that wouldn't fit in the, the $250,000 unless we went with the asphalt base. This one with cement base ends up being like almost double the cost. So we're not going to get too far into costs and exactly what we're going to be doing. I just wanted to give you kind of an idea of the concept. So these are some of the different activities that can be played and we could use it, you know, all year long. So whether it be for hockey or in the summer, they can shoot hoops safely or play pickleball, farmers markets, fitness classes. Just having, you know, a nice base in these arenas would be really helpful for activity, whether it be drop-in or program through our team. So the reason that, I guess I'm kind of leading this presentation tonight is because one of the main objectives for this grant really fit nicely with everything that the community development team is kind of about. So they're really looking at ways to, you know, just, just kind of attack some of the impacts of COVID-19 and just adapting public spaces and making sure that there's more availability for people to gather. You know, we, we don't know when restrictions will be lifting, so we want to provide, you know, nice outdoor opportunities for being together. And we just thought that this was, you know, I guess, using this mandate and also the Community Development Program domains that we've kind of talked about would just work really nicely in the application. But obviously, we would be doing it in partnership with, you know, Parks is going to have a huge role in this. And infrastructure and planning are going to help us out a bit. So what we're, this preliminary budget report, this is just like the, it, it's probably not even close to what the actual cost would be to, to develop, because we don't know what it would cost to make sure that the ground is prepped and that sort of thing. But I just wanted to give you this idea of, you know, kind of a ballpark figure. But again, there would be a lot of unknowns that we don't have time to gather for you at this point in time. So I guess going to stop sharing here. And so I guess what we're looking for right now is just if council is interested in us going forward to apply for this grant. And if we can get that go-ahead to do so, we would then come back to you, because we have to get this grant out quickly. But then we would come back to you with more concrete plans and ideas on what we want to move forward with and give you some ideas to kind of mull over. So do any of the other gentlemen that are joining me tonight, do you guys want to add anything to that?
No, Tanya, I think you did a great job. I, the only thing I'll say is that this has kind of brought the, a, a, a group of collective teams together. And I think that in terms of a relationship building in the organization, this project in its expedited fashion has brought together a great team to put together some ideas here, which I'm, I'm most proud of.
Thank you. Mayor Zahara?
Yes, anytime we can get a grant, I'm all for applying for it. And hopefully that'll give you some time to flesh out the details. I would certainly want to see a little bit more refined plan. But it ties in nicely with our Neighborhood Parks Plan, which is something that I'm very supportive of. We have spaces that are not utilized to their full potential, and I think this will really enhance those spaces.
Counselor Brier?
Thanks, through the chair to administration. I have one comment and a question. I agree with the mayor's comment about the Neighborhood Parks Plan. This is something that he had mentioned quite a few years back. So I, I would love to see that go ahead in, in this format, and I'm certainly in support of a grant. And my question is, you said there's a bunch of unknowns about that. I understand the timeline is tight. But if, or do those unknowns equal funding requests that would be on the $250,000 grant? If we would, if we were accepted for that, so would we be on the hook for money later, is what I'm asking.
Through the chair, the way that I see it working is that we'll be writing, I'm hoping to write up the grant in such a way that it leaves it a little bit open-ended as to what we complete. And so, you know, then, you know, maybe like we did with Griffiths, we can come back to council and say, you know, these are three suggestions, this one fits within the 250, this one is going to be 300. If you want to go for cement, then we're looking at 400, so that would be, you know, 150 from us if we were successful. So we, we can bring something back like that tiered, so you can make a decision. But certainly, our, our objective would be to, you know, provide the enhancements with the 250, because it's very rare that you can get a grant that there's no cost matching that's necessary. And so, you know, we respect that, you know, it's tough times for our community, for our province. And so, you know, if that's the, the will of council, then we would just work to do the enhancements within the grant that we were successful with.
Thank you. Counselor Rook, sorry, Counselor Wilkinson, then Counselor Bevan?
Okay, through the chair to Tanya. Thank you very much for bringing this forward to us, and you're right, to get a grant that we don't have to match is wonderful. So I would really strongly wish that you would go ahead with this. I know it's a big process, but thank you. But I, I just, I'd like to know if there's any statistics on how much does the ice surface at Repsol Place ever get used in the summer? I mean, prior to COVID, because that's a cement base there. And I just wondered if we had statistics, how much that got used for healthy activities?
Through the chair to council. Typically, we have the graduation ceremony at Repsol. And they have the one or two events, but otherwise, for the most of the summer, the Repsol and the arena is not used. Do you have anything to add, Al?
Yeah, I think the key to remember as, in the summertime, we're trying to push people to the outdoor activities. We're not really utilizing Repsol, because then there's going to be some staffing that we have to provide in there, if we're going to open it up for that indoor type of usage. And I know we've tried it in the past historically with not very much success, because again, the end of the summer, people want to be in the outdoors. And this grant opportunity just allows us to expand that, that outdoor type of activity.
Right. They did have roller skating there at one time, didn't they, and other blow-up houses as well? Yeah.
I was going to say, pre-COVID, just with work that I had done with people, we actually use the inside space quite often. And then any of the camps used it, and then when we did have the blow-up set up, people, people were regularly booking it. I just think we haven't, we had kind of set up some things and then COVID.
Right.
COVID ruins everything.
Yeah.
This being outside makes it free for people to use too.
Counselor Bevan and then Counselor Sorenton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To Tanya, thanks for the presentation. I am in favor of moving forward with this. I guess the question I got is that the rink at Griffiths Park is, and I've heard this from many people, is it's in a bad spot. It's less, you can't really get access to it, the parking is not there. It's behind the building, people don't want their kids going out there afterwards. This is, I think a discussion should have is, can we move it across here where the BMX track was? And put it in there. The ground is good there. There was tons and tons of fill brought in there for clay when the BM, uh, track was there and stuff like that, so it's good ground. And this way, by moving it across, you have water across there with the hydrants and everything else. You could put some benches out there and some shade and everything else and make it more of a recreational place out there instead of behind the building, where you try to walk up a hill, kids slip and fall. You got no parking on there except on the sides. If you put it across the road, it kind of solves all your problems and that for everything. And then that ties in with the, also the skateboard park. And if future, you want to put another little bike track in there, bigger one for the kids, you have everything all in there, one shot.
Al, go ahead.
Yeah. Yeah, through the chair to Counselor Bevan. It's amazing how you brought that up. It's that conversation that we had with our, with our team and our community services and Parks team is really one of the things, and again, it doesn't tie to this grant, but it does tie into a concept that we've talked about. It's really coming up with a vision, what Griffiths Park looks like. We've not done a lot of work there, because it wasn't that long ago, we thought that was going to be the multiplex site. Now that we know the multiplex can't go there for reasons, we want to do a really, figure out, flush out the, flush out what the community needs are. Flush out what our vision for Griffiths Park is, is a green space and a park and recreation space within our community. And again, we've had some preliminary discussions between Tanya, Guy and our Parks team on this. And that's one of the things we're going to be working on over the next little while, again, kind of falls more under Guy's portfolio. Has to really come up with some conceptual designs as to what we think is going to work best in that park. And again, that will include best location for the, the skating rink. What does the dog park fit in? How does, you know, the school fit in and the ball diamonds and all that? So that is something we are working on. We've, we've identified that as a real good need for our community. And it's a project that you should see something, you know, in the near future, as to what those concepts will look like.
Thank you. Counselor Sorenton?
Yes, through the chair. Counselor Bevan just told what I was going to say. So my, I'm in full support of the grant application. I did have some concerns with the arena location at Griffiths. I'm not sure where it'd be best. But I think if it was being used all year round, playing hoops at night, we would want it more visible to the street, just for safety reasons. And a second comment would be, I'd rather do one of these arenas really well rather than doing two half jobs. So I, I recommend we do one really good arena that's all, all season and with concrete. Thank you.
Perfect. Anyone else?
I'm also in support. I think it's amazing. I think it's a great concept. And I think unfortunately, we don't know when the pandemic will end or restart or continue. So I think any opportunities we have to provide for outdoor is phenomenal. And any free money we can get is great money. So thank you for finding it and thank you for bringing it forward. I think we have clear across the board, everybody's in support. Thumbs up? Thank you. Tanya, do you and your team have everything you need from us?
Through the chair, just one more thing that I think would be important is if we were to get a letter of support from, you know, mayor and council, it would just strengthen our application. So if, if that's something that you would be willing to do, that would be great.
We all put the thumbs up for the mayor.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and moving on to the Foothills Recreation Management Association.
Through the chair to council, in the spirit of a very long, of a very long agenda, the report is in front of you and I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Guy. I appreciate that, because we're not done after this.
Thank you, Guy. I appreciate that because we're not done after this. Uh, Counsel Shannard?
Hey, I think I'm here. Uh, through to, um, Guy, I read through the whole presentation, very frustrated. Uh, several years ago, the reason that we joined this, uh, is because possible grant funding. And if I can put in a couple of points, where Yellowhead County and Hinton, where they're saying no, the presentation we had several years ago puts us fault. So I'm in favor that we should continue with it. And we really need to pursue this because at our beginning of our meeting, we talked about Wilmore Park. This come up in discussion. I believe some of this information, we do the proper follow-up, we could get a lot of funding to enhance our Wilmore Park. So comment, yes, continue, but let's, um, get after more.
So through the chair to Counselor Schwinnard, um, I want to make it clear, and it's in my report, they do not have a funding program. They do not have, uh, any formal funding, uh, process at all. And, um, uh, when I talked to them, the, they would consider if we brought proposals forward, but they do not have any funding program whatsoever. And, uh, their purpose is not to provide funding to other communities, but to, to run the, uh, campgrounds and, um, uh, trails in the region that they do. Um, so I, I, I'd really want to make that clear. All conversations I've had with them, there is no formal or informal funding program or grants available to us.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Byer and then Counsel Wilkinson?
Thanks, uh, through the chair to council and administration. Um, this is something that when we were discussing it last year or year before, when we committed to them, uh, that our CEO, Derek Hutt, at the time, did, uh, cautious us, caution us of, of this possible outcome. Um, and I, I, I do feel that we had thought the presentation did show that there could be some financial commitment. But knowing now that, um, it appears, uh, that there is not a financial commitment to, uh, the town of Edson. If we proceed with this organization, um, I would prefer to step out of it and, uh, not contribute to them anymore, uh, based on this information and put that money towards our own facility at Wilmore Park. Um, as we do have funding requests from them and we would know exactly where those dollars go. And our administration would be in charge of those funds rather than, um, hoping for what, uh, I'm feeling now is a lottery, um, that, uh, we're just not the bigger player in, unfortunately.
So through the chair to Counselor Byer and, uh, council, they will consider if we brought a project forward or something. But there's no grants or grant programs, formal or informal.
Counsel Byer?
Uh, through the chair to Mr. Latur. So what, what would be a project? How, how far into a project do we have to have something like a detailed design of a project? Or, or is it just, uh, an inkling of a project?
Um, so through the chair to Counselor Byer, um, that, there is no process at all that they have. Um, so their indication is if we were to bring something forward, they would consider it. But again, uh, their purpose is not to distribute money to communities and other organizations. Their purpose is to run, um, the campgrounds and the trails that they're currently putting into the region, which is a very valuable, uh, uh, resource. And it's very, uh, it's a, it's a very valuable thing they're doing for the region. But as in the report, there's no really direct, um, benefit for the town or any access to any real funding for the town.
Counsel Wilkinson and then Counsel Bevan?
Through the chair, uh, to Guy, we did have people from this organization come and present to our town council. And before we make a decision, I would really like to have them come back and present again, because there was certainly a discrepancy between what they said they did and then what they ended up doing. And I think it would be nice to have time to question someone on this to start with. I'm also really disappointed when I see here that we have no defined operational or capital budget for Wilmore Park or the Lions Park. When three years ago, the strategic plan, that was one of our main objectives. So that's really disappointing to me. Do you think any of the things that you heard of tonight with the cycling club would ever fit into a tentative ask for a grant?
I, uh, through the chair to Counselor Wilkinson, um, they gave me no indication again on what process or what they would consider. Uh, it was very vague and that if we brought something forward, they might consider if we brought a project forward.
Oh, they sound organized, don't they? Thank you.
Counselor Bevan?
Through the chair. Yeah, I read this. I know they came to council and was presented before and that. But my feeling is, uh, that we, uh, we pull out of it. We're not getting nothing for our money. They wouldn't even put our name in there and anything else. He wouldn't support us. And the big thing there is they would consider it. Well, I mean, you can consider a lot of things and it never goes anyplace in that. I believe we can put our $20,000 to better use in our own community. They can look after their trails and everything out in the county and stuff like that. We have our own parks that we want to look after here for our residents and anybody else coming in. So I, I would not support this. Uh, where they come to council and that, they're probably going to say they would consider it if we had a project. But I don't think they will also. I would, I'm not in favor of us staying with them.
Counsel Sorenton?
Yeah, uh, through the chair to council, I am in some, uh, in agreement with Counsel Byer and Counsel Bevan. Uh, I think this, uh, $20,000 would go, could go directly towards our cycling association and we, uh, and we wouldn't have to worry that some hope and pray that someday we would get a larger grant down the line. There, the process doesn't seem formalized enough for me to, to bet on that, uh, happening someday. So I would, uh, agree with pulling out for now.
Um, I also would agree with pulling out when I read, uh, tonight's package. Uh, and so our, our first agenda item, followed by this one later on, uh, I saw a very clear connection. Um, I, I can see how for the county and Hinton that this has been really works for them, especially the county. They have so many different campgrounds and such. Uh, we only have, we have the two campgrounds that we're responsible for and the one that is outside of the community that sounds like it is what they kind of provide for. Um, and we already have people doing that. Um, and we have people doing it really, really well, who have spent, uh, enormous amount of volunteer time doing that. So to me, to spend $20,000 on something that has not to date given us anything and that we had to fight to even get our names on, uh, not even on the website, not even mentioned. Uh, I think we've just become a quiet background funder. Counsel Shannard?
Uh, Guy, one more question, because I'm, I'm trying to, I wish I could watch the recording. I think part of the problem here is refreshing my memory. We're barking up the wrong tree. Because what the granting was is not from these people, but it was from their stumpage. Now, when I recall, we're going back at the meeting with stumpage rates up, they had eight or nine million dollars in a pool. And if I'm understanding right, and nobody did a follow-up on it through administration when I first brought it. So what this is, is we got applied to the stumpage fee and they said, we would not get the money because we weren't a member of this. So I believe we're barking up the wrong tree. So if you could contact them back again, because I'm agreeing with the comments in the room, this FRM, or FRMA is not to people give us the money, but where they get funded is where we're, we're going. So I think we're up the wrong tree. So let's contact them back before we get hasty and drop the 20,000, because it was clear, it was eight or nine million dollars. But it's not these people, but it's who they're connected with.
So through the chair to Counselor Schwinnard, I'm just, um, going to pass that over to Al, because he has a little better understanding of the stumpage, um, uh, uh, funding. But I believe, and I probably, Al will confirm, that we can access that money. Um, uh, and we don't have to go through the FRMA to do that.
Go ahead, Al.
Yeah, to the chair. Um, the stumpage fee is collected and main, and administered to the group called FREA, which is Foothills Resource Improvement Association of Alberta. We have accessed a lot of money through FREA for all our fire smarting initiatives. And there's multiple programs within the FREA system that as a municipality, we have access to. Um, now this has all evolved over the last three or four years. Uh, the FRMA group were basically giving us that channel into FREA. We have that direct channel now. We've actually accessed a lot of funds through FREA to do all our fire smart work already. So that's where that fee comes in. Uh, there's multiple programs in there that municipalities can apply for some, not all. Some are very specific to industry. Uh, some of it is a Caribou Recovery up in Grand Cash is funded through this program as well. Um, but that's how that all works. So it is FREA. We've accessed those funds already and we still have access to those funds.
Thank you. Mayor Sahara?
Yeah, uh, through the council. I think, uh, when we did receive, I think the recollection is correct. When we received the presentation, certain impressions were made. Um, and quite frankly, if you can't even put our logo on your website for $20,000, um, I have serious questions on, um, on that system. I am in full favor of pulling out immediately. They were actually, I think they were on the agenda for the county today, asking for more money for some capital enhancements to some campgrounds. That's their ball of wax. They can go ahead and, and, and do that. Um, and I'd rather take that $20,000 and put it directly into Wilmore and the Cycling Association and upgrades at Lions Park, things that we've all been talking about as part of our strategic priorities.
Counsel Wilkinson?
Through the chair. Nice to hear Lions Park there from our mayor. I would like to see that $20,000 kept. When you do hear that we can get it with bypassing this group, we might as well. But I would really like the money to be spent on a study about, uh, Wilmore Park. We did at the strategic plan, think that that would be developed as a rustic campground and that the Lions Park would be just, uh, upgraded so that our visitors and family members could stay there when they came to visit. I would really like to see something moving forward and 20,000 would probably give us some money to start a study. So thank you.
So I think, do you have clear direction there, Mr. Latur, to move forward?
Through the chair to council, I believe I do. Thank you very much. And, um,
Okay. Perfect. Thank you very much. All right, moving forward, we have no information items or sundry items. Uh, questions from media and public regarding items from this committee of the whole meeting. Mr. Betsy, do we have anything?
Yeah, Adrian is with us.
Good evening.
Hi, Adrian.
Hi. I actually have a few questions. I know it's been a long meeting, but unfortunately I have a few questions for you. Um, the first one is the Parks and Rec Department. I know that they do some maintenance out at Vision Park. Do they also do any maintenance out at Wilmore Park?
Uh, Mr. Latur, could you answer that question? Would you like to answer that?
Yes, um, we have, uh, we have custodians out at Wilmore Park that take care of the day-to-day operations. But, um, overall, the town fully takes care of Wilmore Park. And we've been very lucky enough that the Edson Cycling Association has really taken us, has taken a stewardship role of, uh, the trails and obviously building the new bike park. Um, but we, we overall take care of everything out at, um, Wilmore Park, either through the Parks Department or through the custodial staff that we have on contract out there.
Okay. Yeah, I, I knew about the caretakers, but I wasn't sure if you sent lawnmowers and whipper snippers and that kind of thing out there as well. Um, my next question is regarding strategic planning. I know it came up a few times tonight that you do have one coming up in May, if I'm remembering correctly. Is there also a strategic planning session not long after the election? If I remember right, there's usually one quite quickly after an election? Do you normally have two a year?
No, we've changed the dates of that to better align with our budget.
Okay.
Um, so to allow staff, so we've changed the dates, we've increased the, uh, moved that into May. So it gives administration time to use it when developing budget before they bring it to us. Do you want to add to that, uh, Mayor Sahara?
Yes, uh, through to Adrian. I think one of the challenges is after the election, there's a budgetary process underway. There's also AUOMA that's underway, uh, and also, uh, new counselors, uh, and members of council have, uh, need to kind of get accustomed to what's going on. So, uh, that process has moved further into the next year. So the next strategic planning will be, uh, the following spring and maybe a little bit sooner than May, uh, because it is a new council. But, um, at this point in time, we've, we've moved that to the spring. Uh, we do have one council that's completely against it. He's been rolling his eyes, but that has been the direction of council. And it seems to have worked well, uh, with, uh, with, uh, what's been going on.
Okay. That makes sense. Um, the next question I have is regarding taxis, because it was made clear tonight that the responsibility does end up ultimately lying with the municipality. Does that mean that you have liability, potential liability issues with taxi companies?
Administration, who would like to take that one?
Yeah, I think I'll pass it off to Mr. Schramm.
Thanks. Um, really, our, our, our bylaw is the key and how we address this. Uh, I know with the existing taxis, that's what business license means, they have to meet the requirements of the bylaw. Um, the enforcement side of the bylaw is something that we're going to be reviewing, and that's why it needs to have a review done, uh, so we can tighten up some of that stuff. I'm not a liability expert at all, and I'll, I'll qualify that. Um, but again, they have to follow the bylaw and if they're not, then we need, and if we were made aware they're not following the bylaw, then we'll absolutely get on them through enforcement to make sure they're following the bylaw. Does that answer your question?
Sort of. Okay. Um, through the chair, back to Mr. Schramm. Uh, regarding CPOs, do they not currently, like, do the level twos not currently have the ability to assist RCMP's if requested?
Yeah, through the chair to the media. Right now, they can assist the RCMP depending on the nature of the call. Our current CPO level twos, as far as provincial acts, can only do Traffic Safety Act non-moving. Um, and then the provincial offenses and procedures, but that's just more of a ticketing. Uh, however, when it comes to bylaw stuff, we absolutely work closely with the RCMP to address any bylaw concerns.
Okay. Um, second question regarding the CPO level one. I know, um, Mr. Perry mentioned a couple of times the ability to, for warrants to, um, to arrest those that are wanted on a warrant. Does that, will that be coordinated with the RCMP? So you're not potentially apprehending somebody that is part of a larger investigation?
Uh, that is correct. Uh, yeah, so just to answer that question, it's kind of two-fold. It's part of the level of service that, again, that's the enhanced level of service that we're not going to actively go out and try and do those. However, if you're doing a, for example, a traffic stall, um, and will be tied in with the sheriff's operation center, will run the plate. And if it comes up that there's an outstanding warrant, it allows them to action that and they'll obviously call for the RCMP system as well, depending on the nature of the warrant. So it just gives them the tools to be able to do the job effectively and obviously safety is the number one priority.
Okay. Thank you. Um, sorry, I'm flipping through my pages. I think that's all I had for tonight. I can follow up if I need to.
Okay, perfect. Thanks for joining us. All right, any other, um, questions that were sent in, Mrs. Parsons?
No, we didn't receive any other questions.
Mayor Sahara?
Um, I think we should just, uh, pass a motion. I'm going to put a motion on the floor to extend past three hours. We would need unanimous consent for that.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, motion is on the floor. All those in favor? I was having more hope. How things were going to go on camera?
I thought, I thought, I thought Counsel Shannard was going to vote against that, which I've been thankful for. That means we would have to get the next two items done within 30 minutes. So.
Right, right?
We still can.
Why didn't you tell me that?
Why didn't you tell me that first? I would have voted against it.
All right. Then, can I get a motion to move to, oh, sorry, Ms. Parsons?
My apologies. Just a reminder that because I won't be in the in-camera portion, that that first motion to come out will need the time recorded and who made the motions.
You betcha.
Thank you.
All right, can I get a motion to move into camera? Counselor Bevan makes that motion. All those in favor? Motion carried. See you in the meeting. Welcome back. Ms. Parsons, it was Mayor Sahara at 9:59.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Can I get a motion for adjournment? Counselor Sorenton makes that motion. All those in favor? Motion carried. Have a great night, everyone.